Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Village Board of Trustees meeting. Today is February nineteenth, 2021. If I could ask everyone just to stand for the Pledge Allegiances?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, just a couple of announcements before we get into our presentations. First of all, Trustee Brown, you'll notice she's not here, she's not feeling well today, so she's gonna be out. We hope that she's feeling better. The next thing is, I wanted to thank Dave and all the Highway Department members for the great job they did with his last two snowstorms. Doing a great job. Roads look great, sidewalks are clear. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll pass that on to the crew.
Thank you. Historical scavenger hunt. Hugh, we had a huge success that day. Thanks for everything you did with that. Thank my wife for running it through the email system. Our recordings didn't work, Hugh, so we had to just do it through email.
Okay.
It was quite... It was quite challenging at times, just so many emails coming in, but it worked out well. Thanks again. We'll try to do another one in March, it's just a lot to put together and a lot to do on that day, but we're trying to set up another one for March.
May I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If you do too many of them, you're gonna run out of historic places, so I think you're right to skip it for a while, you know what I mean? Push it back.
Yeah, I'd be fine with doing one a year, once a year, but...
Yeah.
I mean, people keep emailing, asking for another one, so...
Okay, yeah, just keep them apart, that's all, I think.
Yeah. All right, next announcement is about our progress with renaming or additionally naming streets after the former mayors of our village. We did Maidstone Avenue in January after the Honorable Paul Rickenback for his service. And next up is, in February, we're going to do Kenneth Westburg, which was Toilsome Lane. So we're working out the dates for that with his family. And we'll be renaming or additionally naming Toilsome Lane, the Honorable Kenneth Westburg, Senior. It should be, I really enjoy, it's a nice tribute to their service and also the families, so... We had ordered the signs and it came in a little too big, so we haven't actually put any of the signs up yet, so that'll be happening soon. Jill's done a good job, she's found another sign for us that'll work much better. Marcos, you wanna talk about paying property taxes online?
Yeah, I mean, we were waiting to announce this feature with the new website that's gonna be launched April first, right around then, but at the same time, the company was ready for it, so we just decided to just put it out there right now, and it'll be next week, so Monday, Monday, Tuesday around there, they'll be able to do it all online.
That's terrific. Thanks for heading that up, that's great. Next on, Billy, could you just give us a quick update about town pond dredging?
Sure, good morning.
Good morning.
So, everyone's witnessed, the work is underway, they're making a lot of good progress. Patrick Bishtry and Drew Bennett and I met at the site yesterday morning, and Patrick is completed with Phase One, which was the southerly, roughly ninety feet of the pond, they've removed all the material out. They've removed about three to three and a half feet of muck. It's being disposed of at a site in East Hampton, it's a farm field, so it's being used as a soil amendment. And things seem to be going pretty smoothly, all considering the weather. It's moving along pretty nicely, and I think Patrick is ready to start moving into Phase Two at this point. He's keeping the site pretty tidy. They had to make some adjustments on some of the water movement, but all things considered, it's moving along pretty well. And, you know, the outfall pipe area entering Hook Pond, you know, I've been keeping an eye on that, and there's been no sedimentation entering Hook Pond, so, you know, the silk stabilization measures in place are working out pretty well.
Thanks, Billy. How about wildlife? I know that's been a big question on social media, and I know we've taken precautions to protect the wildlife the best we can. Have we had any casualties, or...?
Not that I'm aware of. They haven't, Patrick hasn't come across any wildlife, there haven't been any, I mean, there are ducks, you know, swimming around, they haven't been hurt, we haven't come across any turtles.
Yeah, that was the big concern with the turtles.
Yeah, so far, so good, and we have a plan in place in the event that he does come across any turtles, so...
Okay, terrific.
Great.
Thanks, Billy. Next up is Chief Tracy, just give us a quick update on the police reform.
Yes, thank you. We've recently put out a survey to the public, our own. It's, a lot of people have thought that it's actually the same as the towns, it is not. Ours has several narrative sections that we've asked people to fill in with a little more detail, and that's been out for just about a week now, that the, I'm trying to expand the amount of people that answer it, to let people know that it's not the town survey, this is a different one. As everyone knows, the town survey has been out a little bit longer. SAG Harbor recently put out a survey, but again, the three surveys are different, so we're just asking people to please take advantage of it and let us know what you're thinking and let us know how we're doing. I'm gonna present the results of that survey to our police committee next week. That seems to be moving along well. We've already discussed the use of force, we've discussed the police department's rules and procedures, New York State accreditation standards that we're held to as an accredited agency. We discussed at length the hiring process and issues that I personally have with the hiring process in order to allow us to make the hiring process reflect the community's makeup and hence the makeup of our police department. We discussed transparency, training, and one of the big things that we discussed even before the results of the survey is better communication with the community. So, as we formulate a report, all of those things will be taken into account, commented on, and we will have suggestions moving forward and several items that we've already implemented regarding all those topics. In addition, this week, I started a student, East Hampton High School student interview process whereby using Zoom, I've had three high school students last week come in, basically as if they were in the office, and pepper me with questions, so to speak. And no topic was off the books. Three great young people, terrific questions were thrown towards me, I was able to answer them, and I asked them quite a few questions to get their input and feedback, and the offer is out there now, and I think they're gonna take us up on it. We're gonna continue a dialogue regularly with the students and the young people in the community, making them part of our analysis and a way of grading us relative to how we're perceived, because as we all know, very often, the last person that knows how we're perceived is the person in charge. So, we're opening that up and expanding that greatly. That's what I have for you right now, I think we'll be on time with our report, and we'll have some initiatives in there that will be new, certainly.
All right, thanks, Chief. So, just so the public is aware, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is a state mandate that came down to every municipality that has a police department, they must comply to this police reform mandate. So that's where this is all initiated from, and I think we have to have it done by April?
April first, we have to submit it to the state. I'll be presenting a report to the board in March, and then hopefully we can get that on our website, and, you know, and as we, I'm gonna leave the survey up, but the survey will then turn, when I ask the board to put it on the site, will turn the survey questions into a input on the actual report that we've submitted. So we'll get more public input on our report prior to the board sending the report to Albany.
Okay. Thanks. Next, I'm gonna just have Marcos talk about the Centennial Flag gift.
I couldn't really upload it just yet, it's not even coming through yet, but the Centennial Flag was done by Scott Bluedorn last year to celebrate the centennial, and we're retiring the seal, and we decided to get a nice, big gift, frame both flags that we had left that flew over Village Hall, and we gave one to you, and it's in the mayor's office, it looks beautiful, and then the other one, we're giving that as a gift to Scott Bluedorn. We told him to bring a band, because it's rather large, and he's very thankful, he really is.
Yeah, he really did a great job on the Centennial Flag, and we just couldn't work out a deal with him to purchase the rights to it. So, we retired it after the one-year centennial, and we thought it was appropriate to give him the one that was flying over at Village Hall, and hopefully he'll sign the other ones for us, and it was a really nice flag he did. Thanks, Scott. All right, so next we're into presentations. Hugh King, you're up.
Hi.
Hey, Hugh.
The Dominique Place is on the docket. It's 1941. Oscar Brill buys the Dominique House. You know where Oscar Brill's store was? On North Main Street? I think there's a florist there now and something else. Well, he buys it and he offers it to the village for $6,000 if they'll make it into a museum. So Judd Banister, the mayor, writes a letter, and he puts it in the East Hampton Star, telling everybody, hello, we can buy the Dominique Place for $6,000 if we make it into a museum. You know what the date of the letter is? December eighteenth, 1941.
Wow.
Once the war started, everyone forgets about it. Now it comes to 1946, Oscar Brill cannot keep this place anymore, he says he's gonna tear it down. So he begins tearing it down, and who shows up? A member of the Maidstone Club, Dudley Roberts, and he says, hey, I'll take the two workshops and I'll give them to the Historical Society. He gets the two workshops, the Historical Society doesn't want them, or doesn't answer them, and then a few prominent citizens start writing letters saying, we don't want those old derelict buildings on the Village Square or on the Village Green. So he takes them up on his property on Further Lane. Now it's 1957. Somebody from the connections to the Henry DuPont Museum, the Winterthur Museum in Delaware, is going through Ethel Morrison's antique store shop in Southampton and sees all these Dominique tools that she had purchased from Charles Puff Dominique. He contacts the museum, they buy the tools, the benches, the clamps, all of that goes to Winterthur, and now Winterthur wants the two shops. And you know what Dudley Roberts says? No, they're gonna stay here in East Hampton. He saved them twice. Now this is 1957, 5860. How many years later? And where are those shops? Right back where they started, in 1760 for the woodworking shop, and then 1801 for the clock shop. And they're on the same piece of land. Can you imagine the village owns that land, that they're able to put those shops back there? So how about that? And then I'll say one more thing and I'll leave. The village is, I wanna commend the village for undergoing another historic restoration. It's Town Pond, okay? Town Pond was mentioned in the town records right from the beginning, and it wasn't until Chief Larson's question in the scavenger hunt about the body of water, I did some research, in 1896, the pond was gonna fall apart, and nobody was paying attention to it except the Ladies Village Improvement Society.
Right.
And they are really responsible for that, for maintaining something down at that place, okay? And then one more thing, I was listening to the end of the meeting, and Chief Turzis was giving an historical lecture about the buffalo. I hope that was at no additional compensation. Okay, that's it, I'm outta here. Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh. Next up, we have Bob Hefner, who's gonna talk about the Dominique Museum.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
And trustees. I'm here to recommend accepting the low bids for Phase Two work to the Dominique Shops. With Phase One, we completed seventy-five percent of the project. Yet to be done to open the museum to the public. Two bids were received on February ninth for the major contract to complete the building. The bid from John Hummel and Associates is $521,898, and the bid from Carter Melons is $723,936. John Hummel and Associates did an exemplary job with Phase One, and has a first-rate team for Phase Two, and we're fortunate that the most qualified bidder is also the low bidder and can be awarded the contract. Two bids were received for installation of the IA sanitary system. From Ken Roussel, we have $61,416, and from Carter Melons Incorporated, $94,000. There are two other budget items for Phase Two, $14,000 for concrete work to the ADA Entrance Court to be done with the assistance of Dave Collins and the DPW, and $8,000 for Suffolk County Water Authority TAP fees. With the two low bids and these other items, the total budget for all Phase Two work is $605,000. The goal is to award the contracts to John Hummel and Ken Roussel soon, so there can be a grand opening in September. This would be five years since... ...important project. So I have some slides to show you that sort of go as a summary of the whole project and go through it at this critical time, I think it's a good idea to do that. So... Here we have... Historic photos, are you able to see these? Is this on the screen?
Yeah, we can see them.
Okay, great, thank you. So on the top, we have the historic photos of the original Dominique House and photos of the Dominique Museum today at the bottom. The 1798 clock shop is a little building to the left, and the 1791 woodworking shop is the lean-to projecting to the right. As you know, when the house was demolished in 1946, the two shops were saved and moved to Further Lane. In Phase One, the two shops were moved back and connected with an authentic reconstruction of the Dominique House. Why are the Dominique Shops so important? Why is this project worth the significant effort? Why did so many people contribute funds and Dominique furniture for this museum? The Dominique Shops are an icon of East Hampton history and are also of national significance. The collection of Dominique family tools, records, and the many things that they made, including clocks, furniture, farm implements, woodmills, and houses, all taken together, provide the clearest picture of the lives of rural craftsmen in America during the 18th and 19th centuries. The Dominiques are the best documented craftsmen of this era, and their shops are a critical part of the story, since they give a tangible sense of the environment in which they worked. Simply put, this will be a museum of the skilled hands and inventive minds that built East Hampton. We're now poised to complete a journey that really began eighty years ago. As Hugh King told us, in 1941, when the Dominique House was threatened with demolition, Mayor Judson Banister appealed to the village to save the museum. The United States entry into World War II stymied that effort. When the house was demolished, Dudley Roberts saved the clock shop and woodworking shop, moving them to Further Lane, and then as Hugh told us in 1957, he said, no, we'll keep them here, we're not sending them to Winterthur. And finally, in 2016, Barry and LaZanne Rosenstein gave the two shops to the village. And now eighty years since Mayor Banister issued his appeal, we're about to make that a reality. So Phase One, which has been completed, this is a summary of the work that occurred there, and we see the, at the top, the restored shops with the clock shop in the foreground, the exhibit area with the reconstructed timber frame, the interior of the woodworking shop, and a view looking from the clock shop into the exhibit area. John Hummel and Associates has completed the work of Phase One to high standards. Every detail is accurate and authentic, as documented by the Historic American Building Survey records of 1940 and by many historic photographs. The work included the foundation with stones reused from the original house, the hand-hewn timber frame was reconstructed with a donation of $250,000 from Monde Water. The timber frames of the original clock shop and woodworking shop were restored. All features of the exterior are authentic, including windows, doors, pediments, beaded clavards, and thirty-two-inch shingles. Evidence of the original red paint was noted in the 1940 documentation. A hidden part of the project is the five-inch-thick envelope of insulation around the building to allow museum climate standards to be maintained. In the interior, we have wide pine flooring and paneling in the exhibit area and a restored floor in the woodworking shop. Also completed during Phase One is the electrical system and lighting, security and a fire alarm system, sprinkler heads and piping. When the Dominique Shop project was put out to bid in September 2018, the village board chose to break the work into two phases, with Phase One to have a budget of approximately a million and a half dollars. With a change order for issues with broken drainage pipes unearthed at the site, repairing severely deteriorated frames of the two shops and other items, the final cost is $1,584,000. In this slide regarding Phase Two, we see from left to right the clock shop forge, a 1940 sketch of the fireplace in the clock shop, and original brick from the clock shop forge, two views of the workbenches and tool racks of the clock shop, and a photo of the original paneling showing the outlines of the workbenches, shelves, and tool racks. The most significant work of Phase Two is restoration of the interiors of the clock shop and woodworking shop. Oh, I don't know. Work to the clock shop includes reconstructing the forge, fireplace, and chimney, repairing the original floor, reconstructing the partition and doorway between the forge room and workroom, and reconstructing workbenches, shelves, and tool racks. The brickwork of the forge, fireplace, and chimney is the great challenge. John Hummel and Associates has convinced Leander Arnold, who has a long association with the Dominique Shops, to come out of retirement for this project. In 1950, Leander's father used salvaged bricks from the original forge to build a new clock shop chimney for Dudley Roberts on Further Lane. Leander saved these bricks when the chimney was taken down in 2016, and we now have a pallet of 1798 Dominique clock shop bricks. There are reproductions of the Dominique Forge at Winterthur Museum and at Colonial Williamsburg. The one we built here at the original site in the original clock shop and with original bricks would be the most authentic 18th-century forge in America. Restoration of the woodworking shop includes reconstructing the hearth and fireplace, and there was no fireplace in 1940 when the shop was recorded by the Historic American Building Survey, and it was thought the Dominiques labored in the cold. But while repairing the floor frame, evidence of an original fireplace that was later taken down and replaced by a cast-iron stove was found. Other Phase Two work includes plastering the ceilings of the clock shop and exhibit area, putting a finish on the floors of the exhibit area, installing a new water service with a one-inch domestic line and a four-inch fire line, installing an HVAC system, completing the fire suppression system, completing the ADA bathroom and ADA access ramp, and installing the IA sanitary system. For the Phase Two work, the village has received a Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Grant for $85,000 in recognition of how the museum will benefit the North Main Street Commercial District, and a grant of $10,000 from the Village Preservation Society for a workbench in the clock shop. Having received $632,000 towards Phase One from individual donors, the board could certainly look for additional donations for Phase Two. In this slide, across the top, we have the front entrance, the interior of the exhibit area, the doorway from the exhibit area into the woodworking shop, and on the bottom, a stand and clock shop and clock by the Dominiques given to the village in 2018. The Dominique Clockworks, gears and hook mill, columns of Clinton Academy turned by Nathaniel Dominique, and 18th-century workbench in the woodworking shop. The Dominique Shops Museum will be one of the top museums of early American crafts in the country. The Dominique Woodworking Shop is one of only three authentic 18th-century cabinetmaker shops in America, and this will be the only site in the country where a clock shop and woodworking shop of this period are together in one structure. This will be a unique piece of local and national history. If visitors approach the entrance, they are seeing one of the most sophisticated East Hampton buildings of the 18th century. Clinton Academy is the only other East Hampton building of that era that compares to the design and finish of the Dominique House. Opening the front door, the visitor enters the exhibit area within the timber frame. The hand-hewn timber frame is itself an exhibit on woodworking craftsmanship. A doorway in the north wall of this space leads to the original woodworking shop, and a door in the south wall opens to the original clock shop. These are, of course, the gems of the museum. The woodworking shop will be outfitted with workbenches, tool lathes, and tools from the collection of the East Hampton Historical Society. Visitors can see projects underway, a table pedestal or Clinton Academy column can be set up on the lathe, a tabletop can be set out for planting on a workbench. The highlight of the clock shop will be the forge. A blacksmithing project, perhaps forging a windmill component can be worked on there. For the workroom, we have a collection of over 200 of their metalworking tools. Demonstrations by woodworking and metalworking craftsmen in the two shops will be special events that can be videotaped and made available for streaming. For the exhibit area, we have access to many pieces of Dominique furniture. Between those donated to the village and owned by the Historical Society, we have about sixty objects made by the Dominiques that can be displayed. We will also be able to borrow from other museums and collectors, since we have museum-quality common control and fire suppression systems. The windmills of the Nathaniel Dominique Five will be an important story to be told in the exhibit area. We take the hook mill and gardener mill almost for granted. In reality, these have innovative machinery and fine finish that is not equalled by other early American windmills. My aspiration for this museum is to have a scale model of hook mill so that people can see the entire assembly of sails, gearing, and stones in motion, and then a scale model of the wind-powered sawmill that Nathaniel Dominique built across Cedar Street on the lot that is now the Farm Museum. Another feature of the museum space can be a work area where schoolchildren can make objects of wood and metal in the environment that Dominiques worked in. With many possibilities for hands-on experience, this can be East Hampton's best museum experience for schoolchildren. Assuming we begin work soon, the museum can be open to the public by September. At the beginning, the building itself and the outfitted shops will be exciting enough to see on their own. We do not need fully developed exhibits for the grand opening. Exhibits and special events can be developed and can evolve over the years ahead. The many people who contribute to this project, donations of $642,000 in furniture valued over $100,000, look forward to the opening. This board can have the distinction of making that happen. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Bob. And I have to say that you took me through, you know, for a tour of that building, it's just incredible, the work that has been done over there, and the amount of detail that you've put into this project is astonishing. It's really well done. So, does anyone have questions? Other than where are we going to get $600,000?
I have a question. Bob, in the 1976 book with Hammer in Hand written about the Dominique Workshop, that was written by Charles Hummel, is that any relation to John Hummel and Associates?
It isn't.
Cool.
He does have connection with a family in East Hampton, however.
Well.
But it's not John Hummel.
Have we received any donations for Phase Two?
Phase Two, what we have is the $85,000 matching grant from Suffolk County, and the Village Preservation Society, a year or probably more than a year ago now, gave $10,000 for a workbench in the clock shop. That's what they wanted to be credited with as one of the workbenches in the clock shop, so that's $95,000 that is available, and certainly, you know, it would be worthwhile to do fundraising, you know, for additional funds.
Bob, back when the village board approved Phases One and Two, what was the total estimated cost?
Guess it was close to $2 million.
Okay, so now we're looking at close to $2,200,000.
Yes. Yes.
Right, okay. And that includes what the special allowances that you have as well?
Yes.
Or is that on top of this?
No, no, that's the entire budget.
Everything, okay.
Yes.
And the change orders? I mean, do we expect?
The change order, well, phase one, of course, had, we had that unfortunate business digging the foundation, finding the problems with the drainage pipes and the gas line going through a drainage pipe. And we had the unknowns of the structural repairs to the two shops, which were really were in super poor condition, and thank goodness Dudley Roberts just put plywood around them to hold them up. So, and there were also additional costs in some of the materials with the shingles we got involved in the tariff war with Canada for the Alaskan Yellow Cedar. Phase two here is much simpler, and everything is pretty much known. So I don't expect there would be any change orders for phase two.
Well, I have a question. How come there's such a big gap in the two proposals? I mean, it's huge.
I don't really know. Now, we had a walk-through, and Carter Melons did not attend it. I don't know really if Carter Melons ever went into the building. And I was surprised, I had no idea they were bidding. I was surprised to see the bid given to June on the ninth. And yeah, some of the are unrealistically high amounts from Carter Melons.
Okay.
I mean, they're, I can't explain why, but.
Does anyone have any other questions? Tiger? Nothing? I have a question for Hugh, just. What's our museum, Hugh, what's our museum attendance now?
At the Historical Society?
No, no, I'm talking to Hugh about our museums.
You mean Home Sweet Home you're talking about?
Yeah, and the mills.
Yeah, well, the average attendance at the Home Sweet Home has been about 600 or 700 a year from May through September, and the windmills vary. It depends on the weather, you know, with the windmills. But you can get 400 or 500 people coming to the windmill, the hook mill I'm talking about.
Right.
When you come to Home Sweet Home, you also visit the Panago Mill. And now that the gardener mill cottage is open, you can visit the gardener mill too. But now, last year's attendance was low, of course, because we were only open Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Right.
But the Dominique place, you're gonna, you're gonna have people going down there, boy, when that place opens.
Do we, do we open up our, open up Home Sweet Home to our local schools now, Hugh?
I did. I used to have John Howard Payne Week for, from the month that he was born in June, and the schools from Montauk, East Hampton, Amagansett, and Springs would come. And then it, they stopped because I think now they, their curriculum got squeezed, and they go to the Malfred Farm though, which is important. But yes, I'm always open to schoolchildren coming to Home Sweet Home and the windmills. We've taken classes from Montauk Springs and Amagansett into the hook windmill and let them go all the way to the top. We've done that.
Yeah, I'd just like to see our museums, you know, increase, obviously. Be nice to see, we're putting all this money into these museums, it'd be nice to have the public actually see them.
Well, the website now is one place to do that, right? I mean, because Home Sweet Home's website is being worked on right now. But maybe when we have a website that includes the windmills and the gardener mill cottage, and now the Dominique place, right?
Right.
I think that would make a difference.
Okay, all right, great.
I had a question.
I'm sorry, Sandra, go ahead.
I just wanted to know what the special allowances were. Is that the same thing as change orders or just difference?
No, special allowance, we use here for purchase of special material. For instance, for phase two, we're purchasing the bricks for special allowance. And I do all of the, because they're handmade bricks from a company in South Carolina. So I do all of the specification and communication with the manufacturer to get the order together. John Hummel purchased them, and there's a 5%, he gets a 5% markup on it. It's the best way to have control to get good, the quality material we want. If we put that just out in the bid, I'm sure it would be much more expensive because not only would they put more of a, they would protect themselves with a higher, higher amount and with a greater markup. And for labor, some of these things are very, very special. For instance, the shelves in the clock shop, we have to select the right board to use and exactly where it's going. For phase one, special allowance was used for structural repairs, whereas you couldn't really foresee what was going to happen. So when we took the shingles and sheathing off the buildings, we found deteriorated frame, and then they, piece by piece, we decided what the repair would be, and they made the repair. I was there, they recorded their labor. So it's a, it actually gets you the quality control, and it saves money because the contractor is not putting up a higher price to protect himself from unknowns.
Okay. So, phase two is gonna be just the bricks, the special allowance?
Special allowance phase two is bricks and for labor for restoring the interior wood components of the clock shop and woodworking shop.
So that's on top of that $605?
No, 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 that's included.
Okay.
No, 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 that's included. There's, it's, that's included in that amount.
Tiger, I apologize. It's, we had, we had anticipated, I had asked for more financial presentation just so the board, and then the public could kind of follow along for phase one. I feel it's an important time to kind of review what happened in phase one, the change orders, special allowances, and then as we go into phase two before we pick a bid. We'll maybe take another swing at it another time, maybe at the next board meeting in terms of just kind of like a review, because I know the board has questions about it.
Sure, I'm having to put a table together that itemizes all of the.
That'll be good. We're kind of, and we have a lot of projects going on, and I would love to finish this. And I just want to make sure what we're looking at as far as money. And do we need to bond for this if we're going to do it, if the board wants to move forward? Are we gonna put a hold on it? You know, these are the decisions we have to make based on the amount of money. So if we can get a real accurate estimate, I think that would help us make, make the decisions that we have to make. So do you want to do that for the next board meeting then, Bob?
Sure. I mean, the, yeah, the figures you have are the figures. Phase one is complete. Phase two, as I said, there will not be any change orders for phase two because it's a different, there are no, there are virtually no unknowns in phase two.
Well, that's good.
The budget you have is the budget that it will be. There won't be any change orders for phase two.
Right, $605, all in.
That's correct. I can do, as I said, I can give you a table of all of the phase one change orders, you know, for your information, but it's not going to change, I mean, we know, phase one is complete, we know how much that cost. It was an extra $89,000 above the bid. And phase two, we have that $605,000, and.
Okay. Hey, Tiger, you've been involved in this since the start. What's your feelings on this?
Sorry, I had to unmute. I think that it's an incredible process. I mean, I think that the building itself is remarkable. I think the piece of history that we're preserving here is a significant. You know, Dominique furniture is sought after, and to have the workshops open for people to go and see, I think it's just, you know, the sort of thing that we need to be doing in preserving the heritage of East Hampton Village. You know, nothing is cheap.
True.
But, you know, again, had Dudley Roberts not stood in the way of Winterthur collecting these two pieces, we would have nothing here now.
Right. Marcos, quick question for you. If we wanted to use our new foundation, if people wanted to donate and earmark the money they're donating to the Dominique Museum, that can be done, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So that might be a good vehicle for us to use to try to get donations, Bob. We could send the money, and, you know, we could see how much money we could collect, and then maybe, maybe finish it with that. And then we have the county matching, right?
Yes, we do. It's a matching grant from county, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'd be happy to work with the foundation, just, you know, with the direction of the board, just to say what you want to do, then we'll start it.
Sandra, do you have anything?
I think I'm good. That was my only question about special allowances, but he just said it's $605, and we have $85 and $10. So it's a matter of making a decision of getting the rest.
Okay. Chris?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's a remarkable piece of history, and it's beautiful. I think we have an obligation to try and get it done as soon as we can. You know, however, it is $500,000, $600,000, and if 600 people visit the museum a year, that's $1,000 a person. And so I, I'm all in. I'd like to get it done. I think it's beautiful. I think Bob's done a tremendous job, and everybody else has too. I would just like to have further budget discussions on exactly where the $500,000 is coming from. That's all.
Okay. So why don't we?
May I say something?
You are, Hugh.
Yeah. What you're really doing here, what we've done with Home Sweet Home and the three windmills and the gardener mill cottage, and now, and now the Dominique Museum, you're giving a gift to the people in East Hampton. You're never going to have enough attendance at any of these places, you know, to make it financially viable. What you're doing is you're presenting a gift to the people, and it's a wonderful gift. And, and thank you for, thank Bob, of course, for all this work, but thank the board for asking questions and finding out what the parameters are so it's clear to everybody in the village what you're doing. But you're presenting a gift. This is a gift. Home Sweet Home is a gift. The three windmills are a gift. The gardener mill cottage is a gift to the people, and thank you. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Hugh. So why don't we, why don't we look at the different funding options, Marcos and C? And we'll, let's talk about it at the March work session, work session. What we've come up with, how much it's gonna cost. In the meantime, we'll see if we can come up with anybody who would like to donate. And I think we should, you know, we have to finish it. We can't just leave it. We have to finish it, but I just, we have to find, let's look at the finances and come back to this in March at the work session. All right. Anything else from anyone about that? Thanks, Bob. That was very good.
Yep.
All right, Marcos, you want to introduce our next presentation?
I'm gonna butcher her last name. That's Amber Cunha from Motorola for presenting Vigilant Systems.
Hi, everybody. And that was beautiful. It's Portuguese, if anyone's wondering. Anyway, good morning. Thank you all for having me on. My colleague Randy Lasner is also on. He is with IPS, which is the kind of like the permitting and citation part of what we're gonna talk about. So we're gonna transition from, you know, beautifully wonderful art and history to parking, which is also great. But, so we're gonna talk about that a little bit, I guess. Marcos had asked me to kind of detail a very high-level look at the solution that is being proposed. I understand that you currently have some LPR, and there's been some challenges there. So the idea is to implement something in the short, you know, quickly, that will help alleviate those stresses that you're having. So with that, is there any questions before I begin? I'm gonna share just a few slides, and then I can take questions after that.
Yeah, just, just one second, Amber. Marcos, could you just fill in the public and everyone on what we have now and what we're looking at and why?
If Jody, if Jody has that image, then we can start there.
Can you guys see it?
Yeah, I think what we have on the left is the solution we currently have. And then on the right is a solution similar to what Vigilant is proposing. It's just a little, it's a little smaller.
Less obnoxious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, yeah, I'll let Amber continue. That's fine.
Okay. And like, aside from the aesthetics, which is definitely important for a variety of reasons, there's also a significant functionality improvement that you'll see, which ultimately will help to make the community safer, drive compliance with your parking rules and things of that nature, as well as make the residents really happy with a very, you know, seamless, contactless, easy interface that allows them to utilize parking and really manage this shared resource in a way that's gonna benefit everybody. And I think that's just important to note. If you want, I'll share my screen. I'm going to, I'm gonna show you guys. I'm just, I'm not gonna kill you with a PowerPoint. It's Friday. So, but just for your knowledge, so from an LPR standpoint, so first of all, I'm with Motorola Solutions. Our company was Vigilant Solutions, and Motorola bought us about three years ago. We've been in the LPR space for 15 years. We started in law enforcement, which is where we developed and honed our solutions, and then a patent was held by a competitor that expired. So we were able to come to market in the parking and mobility space about three years ago. So that's who, who we are. I think you guys already understand LPR. But basically, if you use a license plate as your universal credential versus a hangtag, a sticker, all of these things, you reap many, many benefits from that. The most being ease of use, you know, the customer service, the collection of data, analytics, things that are gonna help you really be able to identify what's going on in your environment and how to manage it, as well as the customer service part that I spoke of. So when you have the plate, all of a sudden, all the different pieces of technology that you're using to run your parking can all work seamlessly together. We have an open API. We already have about 30, 32 integrations with different partners. The partner for this project is IPS, who we've partnered with extensively throughout the United States on different products, projects, excuse me, with both cities of your size and bigger and smaller. So that's kind of where what the ecosystem looks like that we're talking about. I'm not gonna bore you guys too much, but we, we understand that like enforcement is an issue, budgets are an issue, the idea of more technology, and then the customer experience. And I think that's really important. Just that there's ease of use, there's confidence in the system, the rules are clear, people understand what's happening, and then everything's being enforced uniformly because that builds confidence in the system and then everybody that's using it. Safety, when it comes to parking, is something that's often overlooked. It's not only safety for just, you know, the facilities and the areas in which people are parking. By having better data and by having connections also with like law enforcement and things like that, you, you create a safer environment because you have a better picture through, you know, the, you know, dwell times and occupancy and where citations are being written, you know, where there's scofflaw or abandoned vehicles or stolen vehicles. Like all of that stuff gives you a better picture of the community and allows both the parking as well as your law enforcement to, again, you know, have a better picture and be able to make it safer just by being able to keep track of what's going on. You're gonna pick up a lot of efficiency. If you think about the amount of time it takes to order hangtags and decals and get people to pay for them and distribute them, and people have to come in and like all the different ways of doing that, as well as counterfeiting and things like that as well and misuse, that goes away completely, and your efficiency goes up. So you're gonna see a significant cost savings and more revenue, is the idea. Let's see. So that's basically like, in a nutshell, what the LPR is gonna do. I know you guys wanted to see some installation pictures. So I'm gonna tell you a few more things, and then I'll jump to that. So I mentioned that we've been around for 15 years. That's important because LPR technology continually changes, and we continue to hone it. So the idea of, you know, being able to identify vehicles by like make, model, So the idea of, you know, being able to identify vehicles by like make, model, color, all this different stuff, which is all, um, public information. There's nothing, there's no privacy concerns here or anything like that. I think you guys understand that a license plate is a public credential and there's no PII, which is personally identifying information associated with a license plate available to anybody, you know, in the parking world. Obviously, law enforcement has access to that. Um, so we work in three-week development cycles, so we're continually updating our software. Um, that's included. So you never pay for software upgrades or anything like that. It's all included in what you're purchasing. Um, and we've deployed sixteen thousand cameras just in the last three years in parking and mobility. Um, we've got a dedicated team, you know, we, you have a lot of tools at your hand. And then a couple of things about us, which are unique to us are that, um, we are one of the, I think we're the only company that can share data to law enforcement. So from a parking standpoint, you can flip a switch at your discretion and then those detections, only detections will be pushed to your law enforcement. And then they can use those to aid in investigations. Um, it's important to note that you own all of your data. Um, you set your own retention limits and the, the sharing is up to you. You don't have to do it, but it's available to you if you want to. Um, in terms of integrations, I mentioned, this is really important because this is like the pieces of the puzzle, you know, from that, that diagram that I showed you. There's, there's different ways that people pay. There's different ways that citations are issued, all of those things. So I mentioned, we have an open API. We already have over thirty integrations in place, um, with IPS, which is the partner on this project. And so what that allows us to do is ingest permitting information, validate those permits with the light, the license plate being the credential. Um, you, you know, digital chalking, all these different things that we can do, and then also, um, populate the information to your handheld citations. So if you think about, you know, somebody parks, the system says, hey, you've got a violation. Um, the officer, you know, whether it's a parking officer or a sworn officer, they go out, they determine a citation needs to be issued, they go through that process, the data from the LPR will push to the handheld, including pictures and stuff like that, so that they can, they, you don't, there's efficiency and then also there's, you take out the human error because the data is automatically pushed. It's license plate, date, time, geolocation with coordinates and stuff like that. So there's a lot of benefits to this. Um, and, and as I mentioned, we function pretty seamlessly across, across the United States. We've worked on many projects like this. So what we're talking about today is mobile LPR. That's what we're talking about. So we're talking about outfitting two vehicles, um, replacing what you have and then, um, the people that operate your parking are gonna, will train them and they get the different backend and all of that stuff. So that's basically in a nutshell. And then down the road, if you so choose, you have additional tools um, at your disposal that you can, you know, add to, you can expand the system. You know, whether law enforcement wants to do that at some point as well. Um, you know, you have a lot of options. We can do fixed LPR. Um, I mentioned we have the back office with the data sharing and then, um, we have something called Target Alert Service, which is really cool. If a violation or a, it's called a hot list vehicle, you know, stolen vehicle, vehicle of interest, different things like that. If a parking officer sees one of those vehicles, um, we can send out an alert automatically. Uh, the cameras catch it, the alert can go, it can be an in-vehicle alert, it can go to dispatch, it can go to someone's cell phone, wherever you want to have it sent and then you'll be able to take immediate action because our system functions in real time, um, based on your connectivity. So if that's anywhere from one to sixty seconds, um, based on your connectivity, but it's, it's a pretty cool system. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And then, um, I can jump to, because I don't want to get too technical for you guys. So this is what the cameras themselves look like. These are the mobile cameras. Okay. So the old name on these was Reaper HD. The new name is the L5F. So this is what the camera looks like. As you mentioned, it's very discreet. It's kind of slick looking. Um, they're very nice looking and, um, and they, you know, they don't look scary. They look nice. They're not going to deter anyone. Um, but at the same time, they're, they're very powerful. The, it's important to note, we make our own cameras, actually. We make them here in the United States. Um, and we have dual lensing in these cameras. So there's a color overlay as well as infrared. Most license plates are red with infrared, which is the reflectivity on the plate. Um, but we also take color images because that's really important from an enforcement standpoint, you know, as well as from an analytics standpoint. So that's what we're talking about there. I'm going to show you some shots of what that looks like. I think they're up here. Um, okay. So this is an idea of the pictures that you're going to get. So many LPR systems give you, uh, pictures of plates, plates only, and very little context. And in the terms of, I know you guys do a lot of timed parking and things like that with digital chalking, you know, it's called that because people used to walk around with a chalk stick and literally chalk the tire. So now we do it with an LPR credential. We use a, a GPS location, um, date and timestamp as well as a picture. So you can clearly see that, you know, that in this image of an expired parking, this vehicle has not moved. Um, and then this is all printable and exportable. So if it needs to go to court or anything like that to back up the ticket, you've clearly got that. We capture in daytime, nighttime. It doesn't matter because you've got the, um, the infrared lens as well. So there's no, uh, significant concerns there. Um, I'm going to scroll down to the picture of the installation, just so you can kind of get a sense. And that picture they showed before, so this is a, this is a, uh, security vehicle, but you can see the cameras are very discreet. This is an air conditioner in the back, by the way. That is not a camera. Somebody asked that the other day, but, um, so they're very, very discreet. They're going to be low profile mounted like that. You're going to have three cameras, two off the front, one off the side. That allows you to capture all the different configurations of parking. And then included is the processor, which lives in this tablet, which will sit in the vehicle. And so this is the, the software that the officer operating it will be using. So that's in a nutshell. And if you want to see any other, I have a few other photos, kind of close-ups. See, we mount on other kinds of vehicles, you know, smaller vehicles. They look big here because, um, this is a small vehicle. And then, um, you know, you can see even on here, they're very discreet, different parking, specific vehicles, things like that. And that's just what our fixed cameras look like for installations as well. So some of the benefits of our system, um, that are, you know, why our system versus other systems, I know you did have some challenges, which we've actually, just so you guys know, we've, we've heard that from other clients as well. And in terms of, um, replacing the specific system that you have, um, we were actually asked to do that, um, in a really big city in California as well. So, you know, you're not the first to have challenges. It does happen. Um, again, like I think that we're going to be able to make, uh, everybody's life a little, a lot easier and you're going to have a really nice solution for you. Um, but we have centralized hosting. You don't need any sort of hosting on your end. We, our servers are down in Virginia. Um, as I mentioned, all the data that you collect is a hundred percent yours. Um, and you set all your retention rates and every, uh, retention rates and everything. And then we, we host that for you for the life that you are our client. Um, we have a tool called Locate Analysis, and this is for law enforcement, but this is exclusive to us. Um, and it, it's very neat and very helpful. It helps people find, you know, banned parkers, all different things. Um, we have Mobile Companion, which is a handheld app, which allows, um, uh, officers on street to utilize the system. It functions exactly as the mobile system does. Um, and it's a supplementary tool to the vehicles. And then, um, the data sharing is, is unique to us as well. So you're going to be upgrading your capabilities considerably. Um, and then we have US-based support, as I mentioned, we've got twenty-four seven support as well as in-market support, especially in New York. We have a lot of different dealers that are close by that can help you if you need any help. Um, although mobile is very easy and relatively plug and play. Um, you have standardization ability to share data. You can do overnight monitoring and things like that. So you're going to start to, you know, like I said, get a better picture of the activity, the vehicles, you know, where, where people are parking, how long they're staying, things like that, which is going to really help your operations. Um, and then, um, we also have a hardware upgrade program. So when your, when your hardware starts to reach end of life around five to seven years, um, you're going to be able to, um, we'll work with you to, to, to upgrade your system at that point in time. So that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I know I'm talking real fast, but it's almost noon. Um, so does anybody have any questions for me?
Amber, I just wanted to thank you for the last couple of days. I know you've been working really, really hard on this. Um, I'd ask Chief Tracy if Captain Long, who also happens to be our CIO, our Chief Information Officer, if he can kind of jump in if he's got any questions. I know there's questions regarding the integrations regarding our each software.
Before we do that, before we do that, Marcos, I'd like to say a couple of things. Um, we have a system in place that the prior board had purchased in August. However, since we've been testing it, we've received a tremendous amount of complaints about how the vehicle looks. It's really not about the function. I think the function has been working fine and, and I think Captain Long will attest to that, but it's, it's the, really the optics. And then the other part of it was we only have one vehicle. To get a second one ready to go in case something happens to that vehicle would be, you know, uh, double the money. So this system, Vigilant, has come forward and Marcos has done a lot of work on this and I thank him for that. It's a much more pleasing look and it also gives us two fully equipped cars. So that's why we're looking at this. That's what this is all about. And now I'm going to turn it over to Captain Long.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Mr. Village Administrator, thanks for having me. Um, yeah, I, we've been looking at this. Obviously, the look of the vehicle is not something that, uh, is, uh, pleasing to the board and the public. So this option with Vigilant, uh, has a smaller footprint. And that smaller footprint comes a little bit of a price, um, but it's something we can work with and we certainly will work with it. Um, when we went out to bid for this, um, auto chalk system, we were looking for a digital chalking system. We were not looking for, um, an LPR license plate reader. Now, the auto chalk system is, can function with or without license plates. So if there's no license plate or the plate is obstructed, we're going to, we're going to take a picture of that car and we're going to see that car parked there. We're going to get two pictures, one of the rear of the vehicle and one of a profile. And that's, you know, that's how this system works. It, it runs off of photos of cars, whether or not there's a license plate. Now, of course, the license plate brings in a tremendous amount of information and help for us for permitting, um, for tracking, uh, things of that nature. So obviously, the license plate plays an integral role in parking enforcement. Um, so that is a very important feature, but when we looked at, when we first looked at this, one of the things I was concerned about were people covering their plates, people, um, you know, plates being obstructed like today with snow. So the, the question became, you know, what type of technology do we want to look at? So that's why we went with the, the current vendor. Um, but with Vigilant, it's definitely a smaller footprint. Um, it's a little, um, less in your face and but it does run essentially on license plates. So if a vehicle doesn't have a license plate or it's obstructed, that can be an issue. Um, and I'll let Amber speak to that when I'm finished. Um, but I think we can overcome that and, you know, we'll make, we'll make whatever the board wants to work. So um, I do have a couple of questions, uh, for Amber, just that I think the board would, might be interested in hearing the answers, but, uh, you know, it can you know, answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Yeah, I have a question, uh. When, when you looked at this, did, did you see the pictures of the vehicle, what it was going to look like originally?
Yeah, that was what really sold us on this, were the pictures. The pictures are phenomenal. Um, that
No, I didn't mean that. I meant the, the look of the vehicle, which is what's really caused the problem for everyone.
Well, I mean, yeah, we, we saw what the vehicle was going to look like with the cameras on the front and the back, but it wasn't a priority at that time, I guess is the best way to say it.
Got it. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to know, the, the system we have now doesn't read the license plates.
It does record and read the license plate. Correct. It does record them.
It does record them. So because basically I thought the parking, um, we're basing it on the residence license plate. Is that what, what we're doing? I'm a little bit confused here.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the current vendor that we have reads the license plates and it's called pay by plate or permitting by plate. So the current system we have, as well as the Vigilant system, when it drives by a vehicle, it records the plate and we'll check that against a database of permit holders.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But Sandra, I think what the captain was saying was the Vigilant system can only read the plates as opposed to the system he has now. If it doesn't see a plate, it still records the vehicle. As, as opposed to the Vigilant system, which will just, it'll probably give you an alert that it didn't get the plate, but it will not record that vehicle. Correct?
Correct. That's correct, sir.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. What is the difference between one and another?
That's basically the difference.
Well, and, and if I may, that's, that's the difference from like a, um, a very kind of like rudimentary function, because there's also a lot of benefits with the Vigilant system that you only get with a Vigilant system. And I don't mean that like in a salesy sort of way. There's, there's a lot of things that have to do with the people that are running your parking, um, that have to do with data articulation, ease of use, um, different functionalities. And in terms of like the obstruction and the reading, um, one thing that we're doing now is that, um, we are currently working on a release to issue an alert if there isn't a plate detected. So that is coming down the road very shortly. So you will have that functionality as well. So similar to what you have now. And then also in terms of readability, um, yeah, obviously, like if there's a bike rack in front of a plate, I can't read it. But we also detect front and back plates, depending on, so you can, you have that instance to do that as well as we do partial plate reads.
Okay, so Amber, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I I forget things, uh, a little bit more frequently than they used to. So let me ask you this question now. You're, 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 you're saying that you have the ability to do this in the future. You can read front and back license plates. What are we putting on the car? Because this is important to the board. What are we putting on the car to do that? Are we putting more stuff on the car? Because that's really the issue here, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, aesthetics are
No, it's correct. And I think, I think in her presentation, she said there would be three cameras.
Yep, three low-profile, those small cameras. So they're mounted close. We put two on the roof and one off the side. Um, very small, low-profile mounts drilled into the roof or however you want to mount them. Um, so that, the, the reason for that has to do with the lensing. So you have two eight-millimeter lenses off the front and you have a six-millimeter off the side, which allows you to maximize your capture rate as well as get the pictures of the vehicle.
But are we giving that, are we detecting vehicles without plates with just those three cameras? Or are we adding more stuff on?
Nope. Nope. Everything happens just with those three cameras. Yep.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah. And that's what's kind of slick too. And even like if you look at from a processor standpoint, um, the processor lives in the tablet or you can have a VLP box in the back, which is kind of like the computer. Um, that's how it talks to the cloud. So it's, it's a very slick, small system. That's, that's very, very powerful. And without getting too into it, you're going to be enhancing your technology and you're going to have an ability, you're going to have a lot of abilities that you don't currently have by adding this. In addition to, do you know what I mean? The plate scans and all of that stuff, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff we do that only we do.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I'll wrap it up quickly, Mr. Mayor. The, the only other, um, two things I wanted to say was one, the pictures are, as you know, as you well know, are key in court. So currently, the current system we have now offers us two pictures, front and side, or profile of the car. Um, and they're very high-resolution pictures, which I'm sure Vigilant will have very high resolution pictures also. Um, but those are key when we go to court. GPS does not help us in court, uh, that much, uh, for a lot of reasons. Um, but uh, the, the photos are key with this. And that's, that was my driving force was a, was a really good photo that we could say, here's A and here's B. You were clearly here and you didn't move. So that was key. And, and I'll end with this, sir. Um, I, I, I did speak to our current vendor and they are able to put, uh, the, the current rack that's on the back of the vehicle inside the car. So they would be able to put that behind the glass in the trunk of the vehicle, shooting out the side glass. And we could put a light bar in the front of the car, like a yellow light bar, and reduce the size of those big, uh, lasers which are on the front. They're not actually cameras. Reduce that size down and put that on the light bar. So I just wanted to offer that. Um, you know, we, we were, we're working on your priorities and we're trying to come up with solutions.
What would the cost for them to do that? Did they, is there a cost for that?
Um, we haven't discussed that, but I believe it would be very minimal.
Okay. And to do a second car?
Uh, the second car would probably be what that quote was that I gave, uh, the Village Administrator a couple of days ago. It was around sixty. I don't know.
Okay.
So you're looking at dou-, you know, it's, it's double the price. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, one of my big concerns, obviously, is if that car goes down or is involved in a car accident during the summer. So
Yeah, absolutely. We only have one.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things about the current system is, you know, when, when Captain Long brought this to the board, um, the prior board, uh, and we had a presentation from the vendor, uh, we asked that question about what happens if the car goes out. And that's why we picked up two handhelds to go with it. So we would not be without enforcement if something happened to the vehicle. Um, you know, we've spent sixty-two thousand something on this system already. Uh, would we be, if we were to go with Vigilant, would we be able to recoup any of that? Also, we're talking about the addition of another vehicle. So that's going to be more money on top. You know, I mean, I think that, um, a lot of the complaints that we a lot of the complaints that we have been getting, now I've not heard any complaints about the vehicle. We all know that is, you know, it is out there and in your face. But people will know that it's there. They'll know that we're scanning the plates. They know that we're doing our job. And frankly, I'd rather buy another DPW truck than, you know, pick up a, a new system that may have incremental capabilities. But the system that we have now will do the enforcement. And, you know, I mean, we've got it. And to, I mean, I totally agree. The cameras in the Vigilant system are a lot more attractive. They're much more similar to the vehicle, the cameras we have on the police vehicles that scan.
Right, right.
But, you know, the fact is, if we can make the current vehicle less in your face, I think that would be a much more efficient solution than, you know, dropping the sixty grand that we've already spent. Spending another sixty grand on the Vigilant solution, acquiring another vehicle. I mean, pretty soon, we're talking about real money.
Tiger, I apologize. We, we haven't spent that money just yet. Only a third went there was the deposit with the forty-eight thousand left to pay. And that's why it's so crucial that we do this now before the entire funds get processed. Amber, I just have a quick question. Are other municipalities experiencing the same type of uproar locally that we've been having with our machine? Are they switching to your system because of this?
Um, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, I think that's pretty obvious. And like I said, it's, it's, the most of what I hear honestly is about functionality. Because it's like, there's a lot of different vendors of LPR out there and, and many are good at what they do. We are just very, very robust in terms of our offering. Again, because we've been in the law enforcement space for fifteen years and we've been in parking for three. To give you an idea of who is using our, our equipment right now just for parking, some also have the law enforcement, but I'm going to just read you a quick list if you bear with me. But right now, we have Asbury Park, New Jersey, Port Chester, New York, Pensacola, Florida, Camden, New Jersey, University of Central Florida, Ocala, Florida, Belmar, New Jersey, Jersey City, New Jersey just added us. City of Boston is using us. Chelsea, Massachusetts is using us. Peak Skill, New York, Madison, New Jersey, Bar Harbor. You know, the list, I have a list of like fifty. So you know, we are a newer entrant into the marketing, market, excuse me, in this space. And the reason that people are adopting our technology is not only the aesthetics, but the capabilities that you're getting. Because you just, you, you, there's a few of us out there that offer what we offer. I obviously think we offer the best offering. But if you compare us to what you currently have head to head, I think that you'll see that we offer a better product. The other thing is, is that if you're, if the prices that you're talking about to add an additional vehicle, I believe that that price is actually the same as us adding two vehicles. So, you know, you may want to consider that. And, you know, in terms of a handheld too, I know that we are the only one that has a handheld and it's an app. It's not a device. It's an app that you put on whatever device that you have. It's an annual license. And it offers like continual scanning. There's no stopping. There's no taking pictures. So again, you get into the efficiency portion of that. Sorry, long answer.
No, 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 that was a good answer. Now, just to address some of Tiger's points, we're hoping Tiger that we can get a, if we do purchase the Vigilant system, we'll get two vehicles for the same price that we paid for one. We already have we, two camera systems. We already have the second vehicle, which our building inspector is using, which is identical to the one that they've already outfitted. So the, the vehicles would look exactly the same, which is, I think, important. So if we could spend the sixty on the new, get two vehicles outfitted, get a refund of some sort from the original company, I think we'd be ahead of the game.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, I just heard about this at ten o'clock last night. I think that we need to look at this system. And Amber, I don't want to impugn your system at all. I'm sure it's as wonderful as you say. I would like to put both of these systems side by side and look at it. I mean, it shouldn't take me more than a week to do that. I would like to hear, you know, Captain Long and Chief Tracy's thoughts on this as well in terms of the capability of what they have. And also, if we're going to take the, the, that other hybrid vehicle away from the building department, they're going to need another vehicle.
Yeah, we have that, we have that. Chief Tracy has an extra vehicle in his fleet that he's going to slide over to the building inspector. So we've got that all figured out. What I'd like to do is maybe the, the purpose of this is we'd like, we're kind of running short on time. Our deadline is to start May fifteenth. So if we don't, that's why this came about last minute, Tiger, because it's been a work in progress all week by Marcos and Captain Long and the chief. And it, and it finally came together last night. That's why it went out so late. And the purpose of getting it approved today is to give us the ability to pull the trigger should we decide to prior to the work session that's coming up.
Now, I know, I know we had to go to bid on the Tannery Creek system. Don't we have to go to bid on this as well?
My understanding from Marcos is this on state contract, so you wouldn't need to bid. Correct, Amber?
That's a strength. Yeah, that's correct.
What I'd like to do, Amber, is it possible for you to set up a meeting, say with Jersey City? I think that's probably the closest location for us, that maybe Captain Long would like to take a ride to Jersey City next week and take a look at this system?
Port Chester's probably closer.
Yeah, in Port Chester, yeah, you could probably run up to, we can reach out to Port Chester. And just so you know too, like with Port Chester, they, they bought a mobile system and within seven days, they saw a complete ROI on their system. Because just through SCOOP law enforcement alone. So they're, they're, they're a nice story that we like to share. But yeah, how about I reach out to Port Chester? And then just so you guys know, we're talking to Port Washington and stuff right now too. So, you know, we're talking to a lot of people. But, um, yeah, let me reach out to Port Chester and then I can coordinate with Marcos and see if we can get you guys up there to take a look at it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Just want to stress that if, if the board approves it today, it doesn't mean the contract is signed. It means that we have the time with which to hit our goal of May fifteenth, right, Amber?
Correct. Implementation, implementation from like the day I get a PO is about eight to ten weeks. Because we got to build the kit, we got to ship it out, we got to get it installed, and then we have to get it up and running for you guys. And that's not a significant amount of time, but given your deadline. Yeah, if, if we can move sooner rather than later, you'll be in better shape to hit that deadline.
So if we wait till the March fourth meeting and do it then, will we hit our deadline then?
Um, it's gonna be much, it's gonna be tighter. I mean, that's two weeks tighter. So I mean, it's completely up to you. You know, I don't want to tell you guys what to do. I appreciate you diligence. So, but yeah, I mean, time is time. I can't, I can't make more of it.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, Amber. I think that from my perspective, I will not be approving anything today. We don't know what we can get for what we have. We don't know, you know, what we can trade in. We have no idea where we stand. And as we discussed in the Dominique Building Project, you know, we have a lot of things that we need to spend money on. And I think we need to be very careful with our resources. And I would like to find out more about this. And if we were to proceed as if it will be adopted at the March fourth meeting, and that we can approve it and then the contract can be signed that afternoon, I'd be, I'd be fine with looking at that. But at least this way, we get all the information. I mean, we're kind of, you know, I mean, from my perspective, I haven't even had this for, well, because I didn't, I got the email last night, but I didn't open it until this morning. So I've only had this for four hours.
Right.
You know, I think that we need to hold off until the April fourth meeting on the approval and find out exactly where we are. That's my comment.
Right. You have all the information now, Tiger, and you've heard the presentation. And we're setting up next week, hopefully a demo with a municipality that's using it already. All we're asking here is to pass a resolution that will allow us to move forward. Should we look at all these things, we can, we can pull the trigger faster than the, than the March fourth board meeting. That's it.
I'm all in favor of moving forward and looking at the system, assessing how the system works. Captain Long is really good at this stuff. And, I mean, do we have to have this? If it's on a state contract, we don't have to go to bid, right, Beth?
That's correct.
Yeah. So we, do we have to have a hearing?
No, we're just, we're just switching.
So we can just go and we can just go on March fourth? I think that to go today without knowing what, what we're, you know, where we're going to be with the old system. I mean, do we have a problem canceling that contract? Are they gonna, you know, try and hold us up for, you know, payment of the contract that we signed? I mean, I think we need to get all this information squared away before we make a decision. I'm not against the new system. I like the new cameras a lot. I think this may be the way we have to go, but I don't think we can go today without knowing everything.
We, we certainly can't wait till the March fourth meeting and, and, and it would be my recommendation not even to go with Vigilant after today, because we couldn't get it in time for, for the summer. So that would be the waste of money is the sixty thousand on the March fourth for a system that we then own at the end of February. So I would just recommend, you know, keep that in mind if you want to talk about it.
Well, we're not, we're, we're not talking about signing the contract then. We're talking about having the ability to sign it next week after we have these questions answered. And, and Captain Long looks at the system and it's everything that Amber tells us it is. That's what we're looking for today.
I'd be more comfortable, Mr. Mayor, with even going so far as to call a special meeting next week where we could vote on it after we get all the information. Because we just don't really have all the information yet. And I really feel that, you know, to spending the village's money, we have to make sure we're doing it the right way. And, you know, I mean, I'm happy with a special meeting next week. We can do it in, in five minutes. You know, Captain Long can come on and, and tell us exactly where he is with this system. He can tell us exactly where we are with the old system. I, I just think that that's.
Let me, let me, let me jump to Beth for a second. Beth, a special meeting, do we have to notice that? Is that?
Yes, you have to notice it. Usually, I think it's seventy-two hours. You got to notify the papers. You have to notify, it's got to be posted. So you'd have to, but you could, I mean, you still, you would have time to do it.
What's your advice, Beth? With the timeline we're looking at?
Well, I mean, I think the board themselves would probably want, you know, as much information as possible and what the impacts of, you know, if, if what we currently have can be modified to fit or, or to address the concerns that the board and the public have had so far with what the car currently looks like, then, you know, I think that is something that would be important for the board to know before they move forward.
What, what's the earliest we can set up a special meeting? You said seventy-two hours from today. Do the weekends count? Like, can we set up a meeting for Tuesday? Wednesday?
Yeah, I think so. I would have to.
Why don't we set up a special meeting for as soon as we can? Gather the information. And I mean, I agree with both sides. That current car looks hideous. I've gotten a lot of complaints about that car. And I even think Marco shared with me the number of social media hits that it got was unearthly. I mean, hundreds. I don't know. I've seen it on multiple posts. I think it looks horrible. And so I would like to, I would like to see this through. And Tiger makes a good point. You know, can we make a special meeting as soon as possible? I mean, I, I could go either way on this, but if we could have a meeting on Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, something like that, then.
The whole idea, we got to, we've got, we were going to send the captain up to Port Chester to take a look at their system. So.
If I may, you actually, Southampton Village has our system too. And I don't know, I don't know, Captain Long, if you know Lieutenant Wetter. So we could set up a meeting as quickly as possible with Southampton Village, which might be easier too.
Amber, do they use that for parking enforcement or just for LPR purposes?
For LPR purposes, but they're the same cameras and it's the same system. It's just which backend they're using. So that may be easier for you guys to observe.
Well, I mean, the captain, I mean, we're all well aware of how the LPR works. So I don't know if that's going to be helpful. Kind of wanted to see it in action with parking with that backend.
Can we, can we do this? Can we, you know, again, the most important thing for me is the interface that the officer's looking at in the photos. I don't even have to go anywhere. If we can, if, if I can look at the interface with the photos, get me remote access and I can look at it. Because I've got to satisfy the court and the prosecutor with this stuff. So that's the real key. So if I can look at it even remotely today, tomorrow, I can give you an answer immediately.
And the in-vehicle software is the same for both law enforcement and parking. It's the, the back office software, which is different. So if you, if you had an opportunity to zip over Captain Long, we, I can set that up for you. If you want to run over to Southampton Village, that'd be probably easier. And Lieutenant Wetter can walk you through it. And you can talk to him. You know what I mean? You don't have to talk to me. You can talk to him. And then if you want any more information, we can arrange that as well. Just to, for ease of use and timing is my thinking.
Okay. All right. So let's do this. Let's, Tony, if you can do that. In the meantime, let's set up Beth a special meeting for Tuesday? Marcos?
Tuesday, sure.
Why don't we do Thursday? That gives Tony plenty of time.
Well, Tony's only going to Southampton. He can pull it off between now and Tuesday. So let's get it noticed for Tuesday and because Tony's off Monday anyway. So so let's get this noticed for Tuesday. Amber, if everything goes the way we anticipate, we'll purchase, you know, we'll make the, the order on Tuesday.
Okay. And yeah, and it's, I mean, and I go, again, I'm not telling you guys what to do, but I'll move as quickly as I can on my end once, once we have the paperwork, should you choose to go that way.
Okay. All right, great.
Will Captain Long be able to get the answers about where we're going with the old system by Tuesday?
Yes. Yes. All right. Thanks, Amber.
Thank you all. I really appreciate being included in this. And Marcos has my information. If any other questions come up, please feel free to reach out at any time.
Thanks, Amber. Thanks for all your help.
Before we move to the public hearing, does anybody have anything else on that? All right, great. All right, June, could you read the public hearings?
Sure. Introductory number one, two thousand twenty-one. A proposed amendment to chapter two forty-eight, stormwater management and erosion and sediment control to allow the trustees to amend the required fees by resolution. Purpose: to reduce the fees required for review of an SWP plan and to allow the trustees to amend the fees via resolution rather than local law.
Great. Can I have a motion? Oh, it's a public hearing. This is the public hearing. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
On the phone, Jody, who would like to comment?
Currently, there's no callers on the phone.
Any board members? All right. Can we close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's public hearing number one closed.
Introductory number two, two thousand twenty-one. Proposed amendment to chapter two sixty-seven dash seven A thirty-two, vehicles and traffic, parking time limited in designated locations to amend parking restrictions to accommodate the relocated Village of East Hampton building department now located at eighty-eight Newtown Lane.
All right. And what we're doing is we're just taking the public parking out of that lot and moving it to the next lot?
It, it would, the change would read two sixty-seven dash seven A thirty-two. With the change, it would read at the village-owned premises at eighty-eight Newtown Lane between the hours of eight AM and six PM. It would remove for a period in excess of two hours on the northerly rear row of the parking lot and on the southerly front row by anyone other than those on official business. And it would add, Monday through, including Friday, shall be limited to those on official village business, including Village of East Hampton employees.
So just as a, the, the reason for this is since the building department is now located at eighty-eight Newtown as opposed to. as opposed to at Village Hall, obviously the building department is probably the, has the most people coming and going. And, and now there's a lot more staff, um, that are in that building than were previously. That this change will make sure that the staff has parking. Um, and also that people that are visiting the, um, building department will have parking. And then overflow goes into the lot right behind it.
Okay. Correct, and, and the lot behind it, the, the lot that no one uses.
Yeah.
That's staying the same, right Beth?
Yes, that didn't change.
All right, great. Uh, is there anybody on the line? Jody?
There are no callers on the line.
All right, so can I get a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, uh, Jody, now we're at public comment. Anybody on the line?
Still no callers on the line.
Still no one. Okay, all right, so now we're going to move into the resolutions. June?
Okay. Resolution number one, make a motion to approve claim vouchers for the month of February.
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Through warrants is listed, gen, general fund number 35, number 37, number 38, trust fund number 34, capital number 40, and Lo Sap number 36.
So moved.
Prove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Through budget transfer schedule number three, reference number seven and number eight dated February 10th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approved minutes from the October 1st, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approved departmental reports.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt introductory number one, 2021 as local law number four, 2021. Hereby amending code chapter 248 Stormwater Management and Erosion and Sediment Control to allow the trustees to amend the required fees by resolution.
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number 16, 2021. Hereby setting the fee for stormwater management and erosion and sediment control. Application and review at $2,000 effective retroactively to November 20th, 2020.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt introductory number two dash 2021 as local law number five, 2021. Hereby amending code chapter 267 dash 7A32 to amend parking restrictions to accommodate the relocated Village of East Hampton Building Department now located at 88 Newtown Lane.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Accept Alex Martinez's resignation from the position of part-time Department of Public Works Labor effective retroactively to January 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Accept Terry Rouse's resignation as a member of the Short Term Rental Committee effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Appoint David Driscoll as a member of the Short Term Rental Committee effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd just like to thank Dave for joining the committee and I think he'll have a lot of, uh, important input.
Adopt resolution number 17 dash 2021 hereby appointing Livia G. Ide to the position of full-time paramedic at an annual salary of $59,300 effective March 1st, 2021 as per Chief Tracy's February 12th memo.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pass and carry.
Employ Joseph Kuhn as a per diem paramedic at the hourly rate of $28 effective immediately as per Chief Tracy's February 10th memo.
So moved.
Yep.
All in favor?
Second. Aye. Aye.
Pass and carry.
Accept the $14,240, $40.68 quote from Belson Outdoors for six recycling receptacles as per February 9th memo from D. Collins.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve January 14th, 2021 list of East Hampton Fire Department volunteers who have met requirements and qualified for one year of service award credit.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve Kimberly Woods for data entry services at the rate of $40 for a maximum of $10,000 per year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve Lydia Palmer and Hannah Rosario as unpaid interns.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, just make a note there that Sandra is abstaining since Hannah is her daughter.
Thank you.
And welcome to our interns. They're going to be very helpful this summer. They've already been helpful on a volunteer type basis, but now they're going to be officially interns for the village.
Adopt resolution number 18 dash 2021 hereby appointing Bradford Villett as president and executive director of the East Hampton Village Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. And just a quick note, thank you Brad for heading this up.
Appoint Darry, Carrie Doyle and John McGurk as co-chairs of the East Hampton Village Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. And again, thanks Carrie and John for stepping up to do this for us. This is a very important role we'll, they'll be playing in getting a lot of our projects done.
Prove the $13,419 proposal from General Code Laser Fish and the $13,800 proposal from Unicity for software upgrades and cloud storage.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Notice her public hearing to be held on March 19th, 2021 from introductory number nine, 2021. A proposed amendment to code chapter 267 Vehicles and Traffic to implement paid parking regulations and provide for the necessary equipment to enforce said regulations and to modify the penalty section of such chapter.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Reject February 11th, 2021 bids received for the Osborne Jackson House Repair Project Phase One.
So why are we rejecting those bids? Were they unsatisfactory? Were they too expensive or?
I'm going to let Fred, I'll let Fred address it.
Okay. Good morning. Yes, um, there's, there were some issues that were brought to, uh, to light in, in the, uh, when they did the bids, when we opened the bids, uh, by both bidders. And so we, uh, we, I, I just feel as though that it's not, you know, we, we need to just redo the bids. Remove this one and then redo the bids again because, um, one was, was one of the contractors came in late, uh, two days later. And, um, uh, after the pre-bid walkthrough. And, um, there was also some stuff that was brought to my attention, which we did not see in the bid itself, uh, by one of the contractors. So we, I, I, I just feel as though that it's not, um, you know, it's not fair as fair, um, with the, uh, you know, the bid, bid itself. So we're, we're rebidding today, notice the bidders today, and then we'll be going back out, um, to bid in several weeks.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Notice to bidders for the Osborne Jackson House Repair Project Phase One with the bid opening to be held on March 15th, 2021 at 2:00 PM at Village Hall.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number 19 dash 2021 hereby permitting the 2021 dash 2025 operators of the concession at the main beach known as the Chowder Bowl to use the name Beach Hut on Main for marketing purposes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Notice to bidders for the design of a concrete culvert replacement on David's Lane by the Nature Trail permitting services and funding application through the New York State Bridge, New York Program. Bid opening to be held on April 1st, 2021 at 2:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Are we, are we doing?
No, actually, we're going to, we're going to hold off on number 26 until Tuesday.
Okay. That's it.
All right. Um, we'll just open up for public comment one last time. Jody, anybody on the phone?
Currently, there are no callers on the phone.
No callers. Any board member? All right, can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All right, the meeting is closed. Thanks, everybody. There's no executive session.
No executive session?
No, none.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody. Enjoy the week.
Thanks, you too.